Well, we will off we go.
Off we go.
Call to order this work session of the planning commission for August 18th, 2009. We need to call the roll today?
No.
For works. Okay. All right. Item, that's item number one is to call the order. Item two, discussion of the Superior Municipal Code, Chapter 16 Land Use Code. Matt, do you have a presentation?
Yes, just briefly. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the memo drafted by Jeff Parker, the town attorney, regarding changes or revisions that were made to Chapter 16. Kind of an overview of those revisions that were made to Chapter 16 for the planning commission. And then also to review the comparison document that was drafted and emailed to the planning commission to determine if that document will be useful in the review process and then if there's a way that we can move forward for our review of Chapter 16. The town board had a discussion at their meeting on July 27th, I believe it was, with regard to the planning commission's request for legal counsel to be present at all future Chapter 16 review meetings. They requested the planning commission meet one more time to look at the comparison document, see if it would be useful, and see if there was a way that the commission felt they could move forward without legal counsel present to finish the review of Chapter 16. Kendra Carberry is in, present in place of Jeff Parker. He had a conflict with one of the other clients, which they had a huge
Twelve million dollars.
Twelve million dollar bond issue that he's been involved in that it was important for him to be at the meeting. So he apologizes for not being in attendance tonight, but I think Kendra can more than adequately answer questions from the commission with regards to the memo.
Questions, I guess, from the commission about the memo from the attorney at this point? Or, actually, I'll just open it up because I don't know. Either the memo, the notion of the attorney being here or not being here, the usefulness of the document, so on.
And I'm happy to answer any specific questions on the memo or however you all want to proceed.
Matt, was the deletion document that you sent out, was that created recently or is that any kind of running version that was?
No, it was created after the fact.
Okay. And so that was strictly just showing us what was deleted and what was, is it showing what was added or is it just showing?
Right. So you'll see in some of the, in a number of pages, the entire page is red line or black line. And that doesn't necessarily mean new language, it just
Was moved.
Moved, exactly.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's part of the problem doing this document originally is that we moved so much. So there were pages upon pages of deletions and then pages on pages of additions later in a different area.
Right.
I guess you can't glean from the document itself whether a given section of language was really deleted.
Correct.
Unless you found it.
You could either find it again.
Unless you find it again, right.
That's the problem with doing this.
Trying to find it again.
Right.
I suppose it's better than nothing, but it still leaves a lot of questions such as the, I think one of the big hangups we had was this idea of the substantive changes, the setbacks and heights and things like that that were changed. And to figure that out, we still gonna need to have both of them side by side and go through them and
Now, when you receive the electronic copy and when you, this is what you pull up on the screen. Sorry. But when you print it out, you get also the existing code and changes that were made. That's the comparison. So it's over 500 pages.
Can you clarify that a little?
Yeah.
It's strange.
So when you print out, you get what we're seeing on the screen and what again?
And the existing code, the current code as it is with, with the deletion pages on it.
And there's no, are you, is there any chance of getting that to come up on the screen to salvage a few trees?
Um, yeah.
I guess you can print it, if you print it to PDF, does it do the same thing? Did you try that?
I did not try that.
Probably won't finish before we leave.
Is that a view setting on?
It might be a view setting.
Yeah, I think there was
View changes.
Yeah, view markup or something.
I guess.
Can you take a mic device?
Yeah, me too. Oh. We'll do it.
I think it depends how you're looking at it on your computer because my version comes up at 549 pages.
Must be a setting on my computer then.
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're exactly right. It's still difficult to navigate through even the comparison document. And we've talked about it on staff and Jeff and Fred, we all agree.
I guess, I guess my opinion is that this is just another tool in the potential review process. It doesn't stop us or should not change our method, which I think is the correct method of taking it article by article as we were planning to do. And then using these as references for the, as the commissioners choose to look back at the existing code and/or the deletions report itself. And then looking at the new code and then, so discussing it, I think there's two, for me, there's two, still two parts to this. One is looking at the organization of the chapter and the second is the substantive changes within the code itself. And I don't know that we've come to a resolution on either of those yet, but it seems to me that that's still the issue. And I think the problem that the commission has had and probably will continue to have is, I, even with this, we would like to be able to have that conversation in real time with the attorney.
I understand.
And so if there isn't the funds to do that in the current budget, then perhaps this should wait until such time as there is. My two cents. I mean, I don't think there's any way to get through the code any other way, you know, to do a good job. We have to look at it article by article and have that conversation with the, with the town planner and with staff and with the attorney because all three of you also have feedback for us or can answer questions for us that we can do, we will need to know as we proceed through each of the sections. And I don't know how to get around that. I mean, we can make a list to the attorney, but something that's very efficient and it doesn't create the dialogue and things I think that is important. Is there, I guess I noticed in the memo that Jeff kind of defined a point in which most of the organizational, for lack of a better term, edits were mostly completed and then some of, some if not all of the substantive changes were performed. Is there any chance there's a version of that document prior to the bulk of the substantive changes? The reason I ask is I know that Commissioner McCool, who wasn't able to make it tonight, has particular concerns with reviewing this huge group of changes with those kind of mixed in and not getting their potentially deserved attention and focus. And if, it hit me that if we had that other version of the document, maybe we could do a lot of what we all appreciate has been done on this
Right.
And still avoid, you know, having those substantive babies in our urinal bath water, I guess. So I'm guessing you'd have to check, but if there's any chance
I'm looking at our network now to see what we have because I think the way, the way it occurred is we made some of these non-substantive, I'll call them, changes first, then we met the staff. So I can look on our network and our email system to determine whether versions were sent out. I can't promise that that's the last version, but we may be able to get some interim version.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll do that as we're sitting here unless, you know, I mean, obviously I'll answer other questions as well, but I can do that here and see at least what I can find.
I'm not sure exactly what we'd all wind up doing with that, but it seems like at least a potentially useful document to have.
So I've been sitting here wondering why I'm so angry about this process. And it occurs to me that normally when I get scared it's because, or when I'm, when I get really angry, it's because I'm really scared. And this whole thing that we're going through here reminds me of a time when I stood on the street in Harlem in New York City and I watched some kid, I was probably 20, and I watched some kid who wasn't 15 playing three card Monte. And I guessed right 10 out of 10 times. I dropped 20 bucks on his table and I lost. And I dropped another 20 bucks on his table and I lost. And I dropped another 20 bucks on his table and I lost. That was all the money I took with me for that trip to New York at 15 or 20 or whatever it was. It was, I, I knew in my head that I had every angle covered when I stepped up with my money. I was positive. And yet I lost every time. That's how this process feels to me. It feels like the world is being pulled over the eyes and there isn't a thing anybody can do about it and it just feels wrong. There are too many excuses. There are too many, yeah, but it's too hards. I've got a college education. I read really big documents and I wrote really long papers from those really big documents and I wasn't confused at any time. And so, you know, I, even just reading this memo, well, basically what we did was we dumbed down the code and it was so stupid, you don't even have to know what we dumbed down, just take what we have here now and call it good. And I feel ripped off and I feel like there should be much more outrage in this room. And I commend both of you and Jason as well for your incredibly superior upbringing to mine, for your ability to sit here and not be just seething angry about the crap that's being forced in on us because I can't do it. This is a load of BS that we're going through here. It's just wrong. It's not too hard to make a black line document, even if it's 500 pages long, that says, here's a deleted section. It was moved to new page 37. And you turn to new page 37 and oop, there's the revisions that were made. It's not too hard.
No. And
But hang on, James, but I think that the staff report that goes with the various articles in fact does that. And so you're
Except that it doesn't, and I'll tell you why I know that it doesn't, because we came upon, all by happenstance, one day, the fact that, oh, by the way, we're just gonna change the lock coverage from 30% to 50%. And
It's, but it's there with black and white, right? And that's why, that's why it's the point that the staff is here to answer those questions.
But the staff report that came with it said most of the changes are not substantive on that day.
And, okay, so in that case, then a mistake was made or something, but either way, it's gonna get corrected. Or, and/or we, one of the things we talked about, I'm not sure you were here at that meeting, but one of the things we talked about was leaving the code, the substantive changes such as that alone within the code, so they didn't change, so that we could then adopt the organizational structure of the code and the language of the code, the basic language of the code. And then when you want to talk about lock coverages, then let's handle that separately. We talked about all these things, so
But we've asked, we've asked four times. And we've been here tonight for a list of what are the changes that you made that are substantive and nobody has produced one. Where's the list? And why does that not bother you?
It absolutely bothers me.
So
We have, I recall asking for that list. We've been asking for, you know, a major change in the, in the process or at least some of these, you know, all encompassing documents.
No, we did have conversation about that, about that within the individual articles to say, you've got to identify those things that have, that are substantive changes, you know, material changes to the code.
Where are they?
And we started that on chapter six.
We started on chapter six, but when we stopped, because then, at that point, the attorney couldn't be here, so we said timeout. That's where we stopped. We started the process, they were starting to move down that
You're getting mad at me?
Well, you're mad at me. I'm not, I'm not about the process. I'm just saying.
I'm not about the process.
I'm just saying, I think that the process in general has been developed to be constructive and appropriate, but we can't do that because, or we've chosen not to do that because the attorney can't be here. And we're still, I mean, if you, if you want to be frustrated about something, let's stop this, you know, this insane conversation because this is the one we've had four times and this is the one you've, you know, screamed your head off for four times about.
I haven't screamed yet.
Wait, you don't mean, I'm just saying. So that's, that to me is the, the issue. And I'm comfortable with that, with the process in general. Is it gonna be perfect? No, but the current code isn't perfect either. We know that.
Granted.
So either, either that or just, you know, scrap the whole thing. The code has been fine, you know, for so long. The point of the code revision was to clean it up so that it, so that it's more user-friendly and we won't, we won't find these contradictions and things within the code that, you know, make it that much more confusing for residents, developers, commissioners, board, all those people, all the constituents.
Okay, so back to my initial comment about three card Monte and the bait and switch. Okay? So here we are tonight to have one more discussion with the attorney about the changes that were made. And oddly enough, the attorney can't be here. I mean
Well, I'm here. I mean, I
If you're not the attorney there, it's just that we won't
Yeah. It's not, it's just the land use code.
It bothers the hell out of me.
I've made a lot of them myself, so
And we're not closing Guantanamo Bay here, okay? It's the land use code in Superior, Colorado. Let's just keep it in Guantanamo. No, you're right, it doesn't. Point is that
I made a lot of these changes myself. I'm familiar with the changes and I'm happy to go through them. I, you know, I think that we, we can move forward. I think what staff started to do before this process was stopped was by article by article, set forth the substantive changes in a memo. I do have a version on my email system that we sent over in December of 2008 from our office that I worked on and Jeff worked on and those were the non-substantive change, I won't say non-substantive because obviously I'll give you an example from the memo. We removed the annexation provisions. That's substantive, but they're unnecessary in our local land use code and all they did were mirror the state statutes. We made those kinds of legal revisions. We didn't change anything like setbacks or numbers or height or lot coverage. None of that was done until after this version. So to the extent this will help, we can use the version we sent over in December of 2008, compare it to what we have now, and that should at least identify the changes such as height, you know, those things that you were more concerned about, I assume, than us removing the annexation provisions that are unnecessary in the code. Those are the kinds of things we included in the memo that we did at our office long before staff got involved because, you know, those are legal changes that we make right off the bat. So to the extent that's helpful, we can provide that. You know, I do think other than that, the article by article listing will also be another tool, as you put it, but this may be another tool if you want to do a compare document to this one. So, you know, the, a part of the problem is when you're redoing a chapter that's 300 and something pages long, you run into these problems. So I mean, I will tell you that this isn't the first time this has happened when I've been doing a recodification. It happens a lot because they're, they're so big. So, but I'm happy to provide that and to the extent Matt can create another compare document that may also be a better tool or a different tool, we can do that as well.
I guess that, I don't know, but it seems like a no-brainer to me in terms of, starting there, the remaining question is what, if anything, to salvage of the substantive or other, other edits that were done. I don't know whether they're, it's as simple as there were half a dozen numbers that were changed and you guys can keep track of those and bring them back up after we finish this process or if there's a lot more to it than that. But if it's that simple, I know it removes the few concerns I still have to a large extent of either picking up where we left off or worst case, starting over with the articles and reusing most of the memos that were probably already created. I think we've went, I don't know how many articles we, or chapters, sections we went through already.
We've checked Article 6.
That sounds promising.
After they sent over that version, we did, and so there were a number of changes that were made of that, that were, more clarification of the panel on some things that I packed. So, for instance, if you want to start from the version you talked about, one of those two articles, I would probably then throw in, okay, this is what we think should be changed. It had really nothing to do with other changes that might have been substantive, say lock coverage, those set aside, but there's some other issues within the code that I thought the staff picked up on after they did their shot at it. And so there was more meat for some of the changes we would then, I guess, have to identify those for and talk to them.
But those were hap, were those most likely happening in parallel with some of the quantitative edits?
Oh, quantitative ones, there just aren't that many. Like, there really wasn't, in terms of something like a setback.
Especially when you get into the later articles.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess part of what, the way I look at this is, you know, whether it's a small edit
or a gargantuan one like this, the reason I'm not as, as concerned or feeling like this process is unusually different is we're having to put ourselves in your hands to a large extent and have some faith that you guys are gonna, you know, do your jobs responsibly. And I'm willing to, to go a bit further, I guess, than, than others on, down that path. And so to the extent you can, can separate the thing, and it seems like they're mostly quantitative, I'm sure as soon as I say that we'll find something that's, that's, you know, a language-related issue that we really don't want to have in there, but to the extent, you know, you can recognize the spirit of what we're concerned with in terms of substantive things and, and isolate those, whether it's, you know, as clean cut as taking a December '08 document before you guys ever worked on it as staff or whether it's something in between, I'm not particularly, you know, particularly hard over on, but if it is, you know, half a dozen quantitative changes that can simply be pulled out and handled later and everything else is salvaged, I can appreciate the motivation to salvage what you guys had already done and not add two or three more meetings of, of our commission to tackle those all separately.
I guess, I'll throw this out there. I wonder, I guess I would just remind the commissioners that we had a meeting where we agreed in principle as to how we were gonna go through this process. We've been through this debate and I think it was unanimous that there were six or seven members here that all voted and we said, we're comfortable with this process, given, if we could, you know, it had to do with producing the black line version and the deletions report, which has now happened and probably, I think, as I recall, it had something to do with the attorney being here, but that we would proceed article by article and do this. And so I don't really want to have that debate again. And so, but, but I think those conditions are important and, you know, to the extent that this, if looking at this meant, do we need the attorney still present? I still think so, yes, but
So in our prior agreements of how we thought we would proceed, catch me up or remind me on the items that we will identify as substantive changes, are we, do we need to reach a pre-agreement that says those things really need to be part of a different process and those will be set to the side? And if we want to go forward and approve the, you know, 300 pages going to 200 pages without those substantive changes, then that's step one, you know, mission accomplished. And then anything that has to do with these changes has to follow a process of public hearing and public input and things like that so that those things can really be properly assessed before we say, yeah, that, that would be an appropriate change. Have we, have we made that agreement? See, I don't think
The first time I heard us talking specifically about that being feasible.
What's that?
Tonight was the first time I remember talking about that being, I guess, a feasible option. I'm surprised that there is a, I guess, a document, you know, an archived document that has, as it was laid out.
Yeah. I, it's a good question. I don't, I'm sure I know the answer to that.
Okay.
But, but I know we did, we did talk, I think, about, you know, that public hearing process and making sure that there was adequate public input.
Feedback.
I think at this point, we were trying to get through it and say, okay, what are the things we, like you said, create that list of the things that we, we saw and allow the community, yeah.
Put that out there publicly, you know, as a, you know, by the way, these specific changes, just like we hammered over, what was it, the sign, you know, section? My gosh, for the, you know, we took an entire evening to do just some, some changes on signage. So some of these others, in my opinion, seem to have even a greater impact and, and so they should have a similar kind of hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it seems to me you could go article by article as you planned and then, as you said, at least look at it and look at the, I'll call them, non-substantive changes and make sure you're okay article by article because they're gonna be reasonably minor. And then move on and save the more substantive changes for, for the public
Public hearings, yeah.
I mean, another example is the call up. You know, that's a pretty substantive change. It doesn't have to do with numbers, but it, obviously it's a very substantive change that probably should be subject to public input and everybody should have a discussion on that. So that may be one you set aside and say, we're gonna wait for public hearing on that and we can go through the other articles reasonably quickly, I would assume, if we're setting aside the substantive changes.
Yeah, I guess the only logistic challenge I'm guessing there is, is whether we have, have you guys create a different, earlier version of the, of the document that supposedly doesn't have those or whether we simply identify them and move on, which hopefully we wouldn't really be able to do, I'm sure of that. As we go. So we could, in other words, one option would be, take the document we started with however many months ago, keep working our way through that one rather than an older version and simply, you know, be prepared that whenever something comes up that appears to deserve more scrutiny, that we simply say, don't do that edit right now, we're not gonna accept that, but hang on to it for a more focused public
Put it in, yeah, put it in the list.
That makes more sense to me, actually, even than backing up because it doesn't require staff to spend more resources creating another version of the document and it gives us the opportunity to decide what we consider to be substantive. I think that the remaining concern is if there's stuff we miss, but that's a concern anyway, so it's really up to staff.
I guess I would say that the, the version that you have that was created in December of '08, some piece of, some information from that should be extracted, you know, in a compare document or something that becomes part of the staff report to the commission for, to see those substantive changes because that's the stuff that I think has some of the commissioners
Nervous.
Nervous, absolutely. Right? Because that we won't, we won't see them on our own because, you know
It is separate document.
Yeah, yeah. It's just one more piece of that staff report, you know, that you've done and say, okay, you know.
My guess is some of that effort was just trying to align
My guess is some of that effort was just trying to align the new document with current or state statutes that are out there right now, to make it fluid, so it kind of mirrors, is that a good way to put it? Mirrors other municipalities' changes along the way?
It's also user-friendly, you know, I mean, I think as Jeff pointed out in the memo, having a consistent order of items, so that first we have procedures, then we have criteria, then we have supplemental requirements. That's pretty common in land use codes, and the current original land use code doesn't. It jumps all over the map on that. And so, it's very difficult for staff, I won't speak for staff, but for developers as well, to come in and say, "What do I need to submit? How does it work, and what criteria are there?" Because they were just sort of jumbled all over. And so, I think it was important to create a consistent order of things, you know, for each type of application. So that's one of the, I'll call it, "non-substantive" edits that we made, was say, "A is procedure, B is supplemental requirements, C is criteria." You know, create a specific order and use that throughout.
Format, right.
The same point for notices.
Exactly. Well, to involve the notice requirements into one section. We had the notice repeated 50 times throughout the land use code. There is no need. Refer back to a notice section. This is how you provide notice of a public hearing, before the board, before the planning commission, you know, for an annexation, you know, put it all in there, so that we don't have to have all of these duplicative sections of a notice requirement, so...
It's like it was written in a disjointed, piece-by-piece method of assembling the land use code.
It was a document that was accumulated, and when you, it had something to do with how much money you want to spend, each time you want to change the code. There's that, plus all of these kinds of other issues that pop up. And so, what happens is it keeps, it gets added to, and then tweaks the piece that doesn't quite fit in there anyway, and it doesn't quite then follow a good logic flow, because you're not redoing the whole thing. And that's, over the years, that's how this has gotten. Yeah. So it's a lot of, you know, we wanted to redo this thing probably three or four times in that time span. You know, there just isn't, you know, your time or money sometimes to do all that. So accomplished, what wanted to be done, but it left the code, like something got hammered, you know, it was there, we could get at it, but it was hammered.
It's disjointed.
That's what we had the generic application for. Yeah, sorry. Because that sort of listed, then, okay, developers, "Oh, what do I need to submit?" That's all we really want to know, like, really, the development end. And what do I submit? What do I, you know, what do I have to just give to get this to go? So the application form did allow that, because it listed the stuff for these different types of applications. And there was a blank there too, as a matter of fact, but still, that was how that is not handled.
And the timing's good for something like this, because the development activity is so nonexistent right now.
So it seems like the only potential remaining staking point is whether to wait on council's availability, or budgetary availability, or not. Summarizing your comments fairly.
Yeah, from my perspective.
If we were, if there was a motion to proceed with documents that were very specifically calling out substantive, you know, somewhat separately from organizational changes, I'm not as concerned with the presence of council, although I appreciate your concern with it. So I'd go with either approach, either keep it moving as is essentially, or agree with everyone if the majority would rather wait till we can afford a presence of town council.
Isn't it better to get, I don't know what percentage you'd call it, but...
A 98%?
Right, you know what I'm saying. Whatever number I come up with is going to be a dead one. But isn't it better to have the majority of it pretty, you know, substantively correct and then move forward? I don't know. That's a big question to ask at this point. Something's better than nothing.
Well, I'm not sure, you mean, as motivation to do it sooner than later?
Yeah.
That's part of my motivation.
That's the part I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a good point that, at the moment, we don't really have a lot else on our agenda, so we really couldn't focus on it at this point.
I don't know, that's what I was thinking. I'd be in favor of moving forward under this, some of the serious, just discussed.
So with clear delineation of substantive changes to be, you know, either side-tabled...
Right. Basically, our previous agreement to move forward with your addendum of substantive changes, move to the side list, deal with those publicly.
So, yeah, we'll go through the entire document and make a list of those significant changes that are going to be addressed later.
It sounds like that's what you already started, right?
Right. But, I mean, it's going to be accumulated.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming we're still doing, we would still do these article-by-artikel staff memos, and what I'm asking for is that that memo would, you know, make a point of calling or focusing on those pieces along with everything else, you know, along the rest of the summary you're already doing. But then, I guess I, you know, I like the notion of we just kind of have a rolling tally of things as we're going through, if we're not comfortable with just signing off on them quickly, that they get pulled into a future, separate hearing.
It's killing me, except for James.
I guess it doesn't matter, at this point, what I think. So I'm just going to keep it to myself. Sounds like you have enough people bought in that you don't need me. But I stand on what I said, and have it in it.
The three-card motto.
That this process is bunk, and to say that a 50% solution is better than none is not necessarily true.
I guess...
It doesn't matter, we don't have to argue about it, it's really okay. I'm happy to go with what the majority has to say. So I don't want to have a fight with you, John.
I don't want to have a fight either. That's not the point. I, um, oh, doesn't matter.
We can talk about it later. Look at that, I capitulated.
Call the Louisville Times. Front page headline. Anything else regarding this particular issue?
Question, comparison document. I don't know if you want anything else with this, or you just want to keep it?
I'm curious to see the one you had, because I was sitting here trying to bring that up, and I don't think I was getting it, so... Because it was, I guess, specifically what I was trying to pull out of that document that didn't quite work, although it was the next best thing, was a, you know, in the tables where those numbers cropped up, this is deleted and replaced with this. Never happened, because most of those tables were deleted en masse and replaced, but at least they were side-by-side.
I think in the document that Kendra referenced, you'll see that.
Well, we'll see the original, but we won't see, I mean, what you want to see, obviously, on a, you know, a line document, is anywhere a, you know, a change in a table is made, it stands out, because that character, numbers, deleted.
But theoretically, theoretically, from her document, you would see the old table in the format where the new table is, and you could compare them.
Well, that's actually not too hard to do in this, so that doesn't buy me much. Right? Because at least most of the ones I was looking at, like the ones that we got stuck on, understandably, they're, you know, one page apart, essentially, and you can just sit and go back and forth.
The key is not necessarily what the black lines were, the key is what replaced the black line stuff. And so, and how...
But that's in here, that's in that Word document.
But if you're not willing to take this attorney's or staff's word for, "This was what it was, and this is what it is," then you can go back and look yourself, is the point.
I know, I'm just lazy, I guess. That's the bottom line.
So it almost sounds like the document that might have been generated roughly in December of '08, one could sit there and pretty much side-by-side, page for page, be able to sit then with this latest version and say, you know, everything's laid out similarly, but then, that's where we would see changes.
Right. Was this Uber document just created from a Word compare run? So a Word compare run, doing what you just said, would actually be pretty informative?
Yeah.
Okay. And actually, it would probably do exactly what I was looking for, so, yeah, if you could run that, if nothing else, it'll be, what, 400 pages instead of 500?
Yeah, 200.
It'll be comparing two medium-sized documents rather than a medium or giant one.
Yeah.
Now, that'd be useful.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything official?
I don't, I don't, we're not even, it's not even a regular commission meeting.
I mean, we can actually act on anything anyway. Saying specifically, should we, where should we pick back up? Exactly where we left off, at the beginning of six?
I think, I think at the beginning of six, where we had...
Issues.
Where, yeah, where we started this process, and now we've just, we've added another bit of comparison we would like staff to do, so that we can do, get through our review of the process efficiently, and that's the bottom line, right?
Okay.
So, anything else on that? Anyone?
I don't know.
Are we going to do anything with this letter from George?
This is a work session, so I don't think you can...
Just make note of it?
Yeah, George dropped that off to me today, and I just made copies for you to have. I know he brought it up at the last meeting, so I wanted to make sure you got a copy.
So, if I remember correctly, part of the motivation was to let that move separate from the giant quagmire we've been in. Is that still possible? Can we plan on doing that? If you hadn't already mentioned it to him, what's the timeline like for doing that?
We didn't talk about it.
Without tying you down, is it, are we talking, "Next meeting we'll start doing something"? Is it two or three meetings out?
I would say probably not the next meeting, but we could more than likely get something scheduled, a meeting after that, because it's got to be a public hearing.
Right, yeah, I figured it had to have some lead time.
So we got to have some notification, and then prep work.
So four to six weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
So do we want to have a public hearing on just this, this one item, or just this...
This would be a revision to the current land use code.
Right, right. But not taking into consideration any of the other changes we saw, just strictly this one and one only?
This is revising the existing land use code.
Right, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, so we can do that.
Okay, so we'll get working on that.
Okay. Any...
Just one other brief item. At the next board meeting on August 24, they'll have a public hearing on the rezone for the resolute property from Community Activity Center to Regional Activity Center, if anybody's interested in coming down and...
That was on the agenda.
We have to have two readings, it's an ordinance, we have to have two readings. The first one was the preliminary, and this is the final, and it's public hearing, so if you're interested.
What was the difference, again, between the first one and this one coming in?
Regional and...
Board has two readings for an ordinance?
Okay, now I'm with you.
Yeah, so this is just the second reading.
Thanks.
Anything else, Stan? I don't have anything. Lord knows.
So what's the plan on the schedule, then? We're just going to stick to our regular, every other Tuesday schedule?
I would assume so.
First and third, not every other Tuesday, first and...
I don't, it's a good question. I mean, is there some reason we would up the frequency of these things, to try to get through this faster? I'm not in favor of that necessarily, I just throw it out there.
Should just move it down here.
I think we should do it 24/7. Just grind it out, pour the coffee, let's go. All nighters.
Every other Tuesday allows us to do our prep work.
I was just asking, I wasn't insinuating that, in fact, that works better for me if...
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, George.
I'll talk to him about it. It's just no big rush, you know, it's been 20 months since I...
Yeah, okay.
Another two, three months, because you would be a member of 2007, that I approached and said, "Oh, honey, we're going to redo the contract."
And I told you at that time that we could do it when we do this, so...
Now you know better.
About any answers, would that work?
Well, should be soon. The answer was, four to six weeks, we should be getting the public hearing going.
Very good. Big question, I'm changing, we need to be done on this, but to approach it and do it.
I'm glad we're doing it separate from everything else, for your sake.
Okay, thanks.